Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Fralong.
Here. Coram is present. This time motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is adopted. We have a packed agenda tonight, so I want to keep things moving at a kind of a quick pace. If we could, we have three pretty good sized topics tonight. So we're going to move the police to the first part. So you guys will present first, and I'll turn it over to interim manager Frandl. He is interim until the contract is approved.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight we'll be going over with Sergeant Badowich here to show us about the riot response experience and safety needs in North St. Paul and the possibility of joining the fence consortium. So I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor Council, if you guys haven't met, this is Sergeant Ben Badowich, and he's prepared for a long time. Actually, we started talking about this almost a year ago. So happy to have Ben here and talk to you all on his experiences in the fence consortium as well. Good to see everybody.
Great. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sergeant Ben Badowich. I got hired with North St. Paul, if you're unfamiliar, last year in May of 2022, 2021, I'm sorry. So the idea for this is to go through and give you my experiences prior to North St. Paul as a police officer with the city of Minneapolis. I've been a police officer since 2012. I worked for a small town, Benson, Minnesota, for almost a year and a half, then I came back to the cities with Minneapolis, and then at my current assignment with North St. Paul. I've been a sergeant now with the department since January of this year. The big thing is, is that we're seeing an increase in demonstrations, protests, and riots. If you look here, the big one is the George Floyd riots in Minneapolis, and you have Brooklyn Center, Washington County protest in reference to the charging decision of Brooklyn Center Officer Kim Potter. And then the Maplewood protest of last year around this time, and subsequently that could almost, almost came to North St. Paul. This is my quick experiences. While with Minneapolis, I worked as a mounted patrol officer, so I got to ride horses part-time. I was present for the Jamar Clark occupation protest that basically occupied the 4th precinct for 20 days. I was there for the George Floyd riots. The big thing that the chief and I want to go to you, go to you folks with is, we want you to understand what the role of police officers, what you understand the role of police officers are. Yeah, we get the 911 and the 911 response, and doing traffic enforcement and so forth, but what do we really do is what we want you guys to be involved with. So you understand our decision-making processes, why we're asking for certain funds, why we're asking to go to do certain trainings, and why we are going to ask or bring up the topic of the fence consortium eventually here tonight, and why, why we need, why we believe we need to do that. We encourage you, all of you folks, I know that Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Thorson, they've already accepted ride-alongs. Once again, as a police department, we encourage you, there's an open invitation anytime any of you folks want to do a ride-along, you're more than welcome to come, come ride-along either day or night shift, even if it's for a couple hours, just to experience what it, what it is like in riding around in a patrol car. We also want you to participate too in, in trainings, you know, at the range, how we qualify, our use of force trainings, how do we handcuff people, how we take people to the ground, and this different level of circumstances of why, why we make those decisions. We also want you to understand the, what exactly our department, our department policies and procedures are. And it gets kind of convoluted, there's a lot of language in there, just like city ordinances, and I'm sure you folks are aware, but we have policies and procedures, and the more that you're familiar with that, the more you can understand the decision process that each officer needs to make on a, on a daily and nightly basis. Critical incidences. Critical incidences, we define as anything major. I mean, an officer involved shooting, a homicide that takes place, a vehicle accident where there's fatalities, or even a vehicle pursuit where somebody unfortunately has a fatality, and/or somebody who dies in encussing due to a drug overdose. There's a whole list of things, and understanding what, what actually happens in those is, I don't think a lot of people are familiar, familiar with. They're very similar to a criminal investigation. That's when we have the BCA come out. People are unfamiliar with what the BCA actually does. And then it can also be a criminal trial, civil lawsuits. The state and some agencies are also, and federal and state agencies are starting to push more of a review towards police departments and cities when there is a critical incident. Thus, the post board, post board before, prior to a couple years ago, they didn't, they basically just maintained officers licenses. Now they're more in-depth of doing actual investigations in officers when officers have any type of misconduct. These investigations can take long periods of time. They're not overnight. You can't have answers in a week. Sometimes they take up to over a year, maybe a couple years, depending on the situation. We come in with the federal investigations too, the FBI, State of Minnesota Human Rights, Department of Justice, Ramsey County Attorney's Office, the BCA, and other different lawsuits. Understanding riots and civil unrest. We, we obviously get that people need to express their First Amendment right, which they obviously need to do and they should do. However, there's a certain point where sometimes these demonstrations do turn into a riot, and they do turn into a civil unrest. We want you to understand the different tactics and different responsibilities and different techniques that police departments use to counter protests and riots. You know, that's the tear gas, pepper spray, blast balls, the less lethal rounds, the bean bag or 40 millimeter rounds, mobile field forces, which are the guys that are in the whole suits, that, you know, the big bulky suits, cart team, which is a chemical response team, which also is a SWAT team. They're the ones who actually launch tear gas and launch blast balls and so forth. What strike teams do, strike teams are small individual groups of officers that are mobile and can respond to an area where they need to quickly. What are we going to do for 911 response? If we have, you know, 20 officers here at the police department, who's going to be taking normal 911 calls for domestics, or noise complaints, or something like that? The helicopters involving the National Guard, do we know the process of, if this were to happen in our, North St. Paul, do we know the process of how to get the National Guard to respond? We can see that there was a big miscommunication between the governor's office and the city of Minneapolis mayor's office about the National Guard. They didn't know exactly what to do, and that, that hindered National Guard response. The use of drones, developing a plan for looting, plans for property destruction. You know, like we said, we understand people's First Amendment rights, and we want to allow people to do that. These are safeguards for us and tactics to use when those, when we get the groups that show up and start causing destructive behaviors. Like I said, I was part of the Floyd riots. There was a very miscommunication between the city, city manager, or city, the mayor's office, the council members, and even just a patrol officer to a sergeant. You know, the chief, we didn't know where the chief was. The mayor and governor weren't on the same page. There was really no leadership. There was a lack of communication. There was no command structure. Basically, what it came down to is, is that each precinct inspector was told, you do what you can to save your own precinct. We have too many other things to worry about. You guys are on your own as, as your own, as your own precinct. The big one was, there's, there was nobody to respond to 911 calls at all in the city of Minneapolis when, when the Floyd, Floyd riots were occurring. Citizens were literally told, get together with your neighbor and defend your own neighborhood. There was no one to stop crime. And the big thing too was, is that officers were not properly equipped. We were given the bare minimum, which was a gas mask, a riot helmet, and a baton, and we were told to go out there and stop a riot. But we were having fireworks, bottles, feces, urine, pepper spray, boulders, everything thrown at us, and officers were getting injured by, by the minute because we weren't properly equipped. There was also no prior training within the police, in the police department. We went through, when I was there, we went through one class, and that was at the, when you went through the police academy at the beginning of your, when you got hired. And so I went almost eight years without any type of, of riot patrol or riot training. Things to expect during riots, obviously massive property damage, looting, fire, and arson, injuries to officers and civilians, media, and depending on how the situation is, political figures may come to town. Tactics used by rioters, lasers, makeshift barriers, gas masks, cans of soup, frozen water bottles. These, the majority of these riots, when they, when they actually get involved and get going, is you, they actually have their own structure when it comes, when it is, when the riots taking place. They have lawyers who are volunteers to walk around, make sure that officers are, you know, not violating anybody's, anybody, any of the rioters' civil rights. They have medics, which are usually trained people that can deal with injuries. They also have leaders that, that communicate for groups which, which way to go. And when the 3rd precinct fell, they, that was, not many people know this, but that was planned initially. They, the rioters, the, the groups that were involved in, in doing that, they created a disturbance downtown, a riot downtown with a smaller group of people, which focused all of the resources from the 3rd precinct. And then once all those resources were downtown, is when they attacked the 3rd precinct, and that's one of the main reasons why the 3rd precinct fell. You're going to have signs, umbrellas, firearms, fireworks. Here's a couple pictures I took online, and then also a couple that, that I actually took myself.
Ben, are you saying that they actually bring in medics, their own medics to?
Yes.
Help them? Okay.
Yes. You can see at the top right of the screen, the people in the green hats, those identified as lawyers. They're part, part of the National Lawyers Guild. On the top left corner, it's a group known as Antifa, how they have makeshift shields. They also have different, they also have gas masks themselves too, and goggles. The big thing down here at the, at the, the big picture, this was taken in Maplewood during the September 10th protest or demonstration outside of Maplewood City Hall. You can see the gentleman with a, in the black, and he, I believe he's got Army fatigues on, and he's carrying a long, long assault rifle. Those are things that you are, we're going to, we are expecting to see. Media, there's controversial, and it's, and it's hard, and it's a, it's a very gray area when it comes to media. What do we define as media? Do we define WCCO as a media organization, and then a person who is basically just filming on Facebook Live because they have a YouTube channel? Are they considered media? Those are issues that, that we need to understand and work through prior, prior to an incident occurring in North St. Paul, so that when the incident, or if an incident occurs in North St. Paul, we are immediately able to handle it and identify it. Another big one is memorials. You can see the, the bottom right corner is 38th and Chicago, the George Floyd, George Floyd Square, the, the center at the top, that's in Brooklyn Center. And then the bottom left one is, is Devon. This was a gentleman who was murdered in Maplewood, just off of McKnight and Larpenter, right by the, the old golf course. His memorial was very large as well. It wasn't as big as the other two pictures, but it is still large. And you have a lot of family and friends that congregate around these memorials, and unfortunately, a lot of the memorials through some of these incidences does bring crime. And Maplewood Police were dealing with crime, 911 calls constantly while this memorial was erected. So the, the point is, is we need to understand, we should, of, of what type of response are we going to have to allow somebody to have a memorial on a sidewalk? How long can they allow it to be there, if they can even allow it to be there? Another big one is protection of police officers' homes. This is Kim Potter's home. I believe that she lived in the city of Crystal. I know off the top of my head, there's at least, at least six police officers that work through other agencies that live in the city of North St. Paul. If one of those officers are involved in some type of critical incident, what type of things are we going to do as a city to help defend that officer's homes? The big thing too is communication, and I know that this has already been a work in pro, progress. We already, I can't remember the, the website or the, the system that we use to alert citizens of any type of disturbances or, or emergency alerts.
Civic plus.
Civic plus. But, you know, the big thing is communicating with the city and county attorneys, communicating with the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department, National Guard, State Patrol, media, public relations, those types of things. The other, the other thing though too is, is that some of this stuff doesn't necessarily apply just to rioting and looting. What happens if one of the companies here, like Burwell Roofing, there's a large fire, and it's creating a lot of toxic, toxic gas in the area? What exactly our, our city are we going to do? How are we going to let the citizens know? How are we going to let visitors know? How are we going to coordinate with other departments that are responding to this? Or even an active shooter, if the unthinkable happens within the city of North St. Paul? How are we, a lot of these things that I'm talking about can also be applied to different, to different disasters, either man-made or natural. Things to consider, like I said, is understanding, please understand and get to know what crowd control devices are. Some of them look bad, some of them aren't, you know, some of them look scary, but understand that there is a policy and procedure for each one of those. What are, what's the policy on, how are we going to release body worn and dash, dash cameras if there's an incident in North St. Paul? Another big issue that happened in Minneapolis was munitions and overtime. Basically, for two weeks straight, I had to work 12 to 15 hours every single day during, during the Floyd riots. That's a lot of money that the city has to, has to pay out. But also munitions, as far as what we have, what the sheriff's department has, and getting those work, having those conversations prior to anything happening to figure out if we had to reimburse the sheriff's department, or if the sheriff's department, or doesn't charge us. The other big thing too is, is that a conversation needs to be have, needs to be had as, at what point do we go from a demonstration to a protest to a civil disturbance versus a riot? You know, what's the threshold? Because that can be construed, and I mean, some cities have a very low threshold of as soon as laws are being broken, we act. Or in Minneapolis's case, you just let people do whatever they want to do, and look what eventually happened. Excuse me. Keep enough, our officer safe, equipment, flex gloves, less lethal weapons, protective suits, keep our city employees and buildings safe, the fence consortium, which we'll get to here in a little bit, and also even hardening the structure of City Hall as far as ballistic windows. During the Floyd protest, and even the Brooklyn Center protest, there are a lot of police departments in a lot of city halls that received damage from just agitators. Brooklyn Park, their, their city hall or their police department was actually shot at during, during those riots that were happening in there, in the neighboring city. A lot of these things though too can also be related to everyday use, like ballistic helmets. That stuff can be used to, for active shooters, and it can also help officers, if a natural disaster comes through town, and there's a bunch of down wires and down trees, officers can wear those helmets, just as firefighters would wear their helmets when they're dealing, when they're responding to emergencies as well.
Quick on that last slide there. So the ask tonight, I mean, that's recommendations for the budget. We're going to be working on these items for the budget. Is that correct, Chief? And then tonight, we're asking for the, for the fence, for the fence consortium in the regular meeting. So the stuff that you're asking for here tonight, or the recommendation and needs are going to be a separate meeting for, for the budget?
Yeah, tonight it's just the fence consortium.
I just want to make sure the council is aware that I see the recommendations and needs, so we'll have another meeting for that.
Tonight's just the, the fence and the public works.
Thank you.
The fence consortium, which we're all here about, there was a gentleman for one of the West Metro agencies or cities, the Public Works manager, he decided to get together and say, if we got a group of cities together and signed a joint powers agreement to purchase a, a fence, an anti-scaling fence, it would reduce the amount of cost that each city would have to take a burden on. That's how the fence consortium started. Word spread, people, city, different departments, majority of them, police departments, even joined in on the conversation and, and the startup of the group. Basically, what the fence consortium does is, is that they, they're, they're going to purchase a anti-scale fence. What the anti-scale fence is, is that it's a specially designed fence where people cannot climb it, and it is very hard to push over and break down that fence through the design that, that, that it's created with. So it consists of the seven countywide metro area. It's, the idea is to protect city infrastructure. The other big one is a big de-escalation of tensions between law enforcement and protesters. During the Brooklyn Center riots, the first, first two nights, they just had the one fence up. And once the, once that fence was possibly going to be broken down, is when the officers had to act with the, with less lethal and tear gas and so forth, is because the agitators were trying to breach the fence. They got wise, and they set up a secondary fence. Once that secondary fence was brought in, and there was a major buffer between law enforcement and the protesters and rioters, there was a huge de-escalation in the use of tear gas, and less lethal munitions basically dropped to zero. This allows a barrier between law enforcement and people exercising their First Amendment right. This fence consortium is a work in progress. They are attempting to get funding from the state legislation in the next, next couple of years. The consortium has established a board, which is made up of an emergency management personnel, a city manager, and a few other, and one, at least one police chief, and then a few other department heads with that occur in a city. The consortium will purchase, purchase the fence, and it will be held at a area within the, within the metro. It is, and then in Public Works employees from different cities who are part of the, of the consortium will train roughly two or three times a year as far as how to take, or put the fence up and how to take it down. We're presenting this too because a joint, a joint powers agreement needs to be signed off on as well as, as funding for it. Right now, the, the fence consortium is requesting one Public Works employee. This employee doesn't necessarily, it's just if an incident occurs, say, in a neighboring jurisdiction up in White River Lake, that the fence needs to be erected, then a North St. Paul Public Works employee will have to go to a meeting location that's been determined, and then assist other, other Public Works employees from all these other different agencies and cities to build this fence.
That sounds good, but what if something just happens all of a sudden, and you have to wait for this fence, or is there something, something in the works on that?
So what, if, when an incident happens in a city, the police chief or city manager or mayor will make a request to the fence consortium board. The fence consortium board will look at the circumstances of it, and will either approve or not, not approve of allowing this fence to be erected and be deployed. Most likely, there's limited situations where I can say that they would say no. I mean, a fence isn't going to be going up every week. It's going to be for only major incidences. Was there any other part to that question?
You know, if something would pop up, I know we had a little lead time, that Maplewood thing, and we had enough time to get it, you know, fortified around here. I, I just, you know, the, the timing, you know, how that all works, but.
I can add to that. So that's, that's kind of the biggest positive of this, joining this fence consortium is the time. So if we were to outright say, we need a fence, that's going to take multiple days for us to vet vendors and deal with costs and shipping and get in the fence, not to mention, we would have no way of putting it together without any formal training or a team to actually do that. So the goal of this group is, you call, you ask for the fence, you get the fence within three hours. It comes with a team to put the fence together. So that's, that's one of the biggest wins in joining this. It's like a fence insurance policy, and it shows up within three hours. So time is, is definitely a part of this. Yeah.
So the, these, these numbers, to join the fence consortium as the, as an initial, or initial, or initial city, right now, the rate is approximately $5,160. That's for, that's for the full year. The below number, the 86,000, this is the number directly from the Brooklyn Center city manager. That's what Brooklyn Center spent on the first three months of their fencing to protect their police department. Basically, by the time that a full year went down, the last month's rental was 6,000. So when you go through an outside agency, a different group outside of this fence consortium, you have to, not only do you have to pay this 86,000, but you also had to pay the transportation fee. You had to, and then they, the companies also charge a hazard pay too as well because of the circumstances in, in which it is. So this 80, like I said, this 86,000 was for the, was for the first three months. And then eventually, their last month of rental, the longer that you proceed to rent, the, the lower the cost goes. This is, I'm just going over, this is the, this is kind of the Brooklyn Center numbers. The big thing too is, is that, that if you call a company out, the company has to respond. They have to come out, they have to measure, they have to load their supplies, they have to get their workers in, then they come in and deploy, deploy their, their fence, which could take a couple days to actually do and set up. And for Brooklyn Center- And for Brooklyn Center, their, their measurements didn't actually cover around the full police department. It just basically covered like half of, half of it around where the main group of, uh, demonstrations were occurring in front of the, um, in front of their, uh, police department. Um, cities who have already joined the consortium here, um, as of, uh, August eighteenth, um, these are all cities that have signed the joint powers agreement. You can see Maplewood, um, Oakdale, White Bear Lake, um, the air, airport, um, which is also, I think, is, is one of the bigger departments because they have so many restrictions as far as being a, a federal, also being a federal agency. Stillwater, um, there's, the majority of cities are being present, or councils are being presented the same presentation across the thing, across, across theirs, across the metro area. The more cities that actually sign up, the lower the cost. So, if you get a hundred cities that are all on board, the cost will actually be decreased for that, that yearly, that yearly, uh, fee. This is what, uh, we, this, this is the drawing and measurements that we presented. Uh, as you can see, this is City Hall. Um, the yellow is where the fence would actually be, um, would, would be deployed to, uh, to protect, to protect the city. So, not only do we not, I put this in here is because the fence consortium already has that, after the joint powers agreement is signed and the city decides to move forward with, this is it, that's all we need to do. We, no way need, nobody else needs to come out and do any type of measurements, we don't need to get bids. They already have it and all it does is it takes a phone call to the fence consortium board to say, hey, we need the fence, and the fence consortium board to say, alright, we're on the way. That, that, that's the, that's the, uh, the strong point there.
And real, uh, quick question, oh, questions.
Perfect timing.
Perfect time. Uh, if, uh, again, I think, under circumstances now moving forward, we've learned a lot of things from the George Floyd and, you know, all the riots that are going on. What would happen if we were, if it happens again and it's citywide, metrowide, all these cities are asking for that fencing? Do we have the amount of available fencing for all these cities to handle it? Or is this just a incident that might be your city alone, something's going on? I'm just looking at worst case and then, you know.
So, they're going to get enough fencing for the two largest departments that are in this fencing consortium. So, if it is a handful of departments, then, you know, based on who's in there, so if St. Paul's in there or, or any larger scale agency, they would have enough square footage of fencing purchased to be available for, you know, a handful of smaller agencies. They wouldn't have enough fencing to have every, a fence around every single city hall that's in the group, no. But they would have a lot, so.
So, our example would be if something happened like, similar to what happened last summer, pretty specific to Maplewood, uh, North St. Paul, kind of our area.
Yep.
We would probably have enough fencing as long as Minneapolis and St. Paul are not under lockdown at the same time.
Correct, yeah, there would be if it was just, I mean, with the cities that are in there right now, um, if it was just one or two agencies or city halls that needed it, there would absolutely be enough. Yeah, and just, just the biggest, a couple larger items on there, just if we were to outright purchase the fencing alone for our square footage is four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, uh, just wanted to point that out. So, uh, quite a cost savings if we go with the consortium insurance plan versus outright purchasing it.
Any other questions? I'm sure people have questions, uh, Councilmember Y.
Yeah, sure, thank you for your presentation and, and bringing this forth. I do have several questions. As for the larger PDs, does that include anyone that's in the consortium? And if it were to be called, say, multiple, um, uh, incidences, critical incidences in a certain area? So, you have five communities who need fencing. Um, does it go to the largest two or they're able to dispatch all, or all of the equipment that is available? Or is it just the two PDs?
So, so that's where it comes to the decision of the board, right? So, this fencing consortium board, if any chief of whatever agencies asks for it, they call and say, hey, we need a fence. That's where the board does have some say, they're the ultimate determining factor on who, who gets the fence and whether or not, uh, there's enough for all five, uh, but they get to make the final decision. And it's, I see it as a good thing, so there's not, you know, any, any cities saying, we have some minor incident, hey, we want a fence for that, so that they're not getting a fence just at, uh, every opportunity that, you know, so there is some vetting. Uh, I, I wouldn't see any seat that's on this list calling and asking for a fence for a reason that they don't feel is, uh, a need for it. But, uh, yeah, the ultimate decision makers are the, the consortium board members. So, if more get in, then there's more fencing available. If more need it, then they would be able to fill that need.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess like my concern there is like in the agreement itself, it doesn't really, it, it specifies, like the consortium is not, um, guaranteeing a fast response or anything like that. So, that's where I kind of, um, am wondering what, what they can deliver on and what they can guarantee for our participation.
There's, there's, there's multiple, there's going to be multiple factors and when you, when the phone call is made to the fence consortium board, they're going to do a threat analysis of who's calling and why are they calling, who needs it the most. If, you know, if there's an incident at Maplewood and somebody from Inataca calls and says, well, we got a twenty-person protest, but Maplewood has a hundred and fifty, you know, that, they're going to take that into consideration. Um, as far as the, the deployment of the fence, since that it is being put up by public works employees, it's only going to be done in a completely safe manner and in a safe time. So, it's not going to be done at one AM when they're, which is right usually in the previous or in the history of, of riots have shown us when it's really the hot time and the big time. It's going to be usually done at five, six, seven AM when nobody's out on the street. And it's, when it is the complete safest time for those public employees to, um, but, to build the fence. I think that that's where you're getting the, they can't say that it's going to be a fast time.
Let me double check the, the language, but, um, my understanding of when I was reading it, that the consortium themselves would not be, you know, liable to, to not responding in a specific amount of time, say they were delayed for an extended amount of time, um, and we needed the fence faster, that they would not be, there's nothing that, you know, to hold them accountable for that.
Yeah, they might, just with the intangibles, that, that could be why they didn't spell out. I just know in, in all the conversations and Ben joining this, uh, consortium work group for, what did you, six months ago about? I mean, their biggest thing was timing. It was, you know, if, if they didn't put an exact timing, I get it in there, but they're, they're, uh, they were strong on, you know, it's going to be the fence in a matter of hours instead of a matter of days. So, either way, we're definitely ahead going with this group versus just freelancing on our own. If we need a fence, then, I mean, there's, there's absolutely a guarantee it's going to be multiple days before we can make that a reality for us if we're not in the group.
And then the agreement also discussed, um, some of the, uh, deployment team. What does that look like? And then, my understanding in the language too, that, that we are responsible for covering the costs of training, any overtime. Um, is that on top of the five thousand annual membership? And is that accounted for in both budgets, both public works and, and PD?
So, for the training side, that, that's where, uh, our, our public works team gets, uh, gets involved. And that would be, I think it's two to three times a year that they would have, uh, required to train. I've spoke with Ron and Randy quite a bit on this item and I think their plan was to have two, um, designated employees for the, uh, fencing consortium, consortium, uh, build, build out team. So, cost-wise, it's, you know, two to three eight-hour days for two people. Not a, not a major budget impact. And I would, I would imagine it's going to be at a regular working day. So, instead of, uh, coming to work here, they're, they're going to work at, uh, whatever the site is that they're planning on, on training at, so I don't think there's a major budget impact, no. And for, on the PD side, uh, no training on, on the fencing consortium. I mean, our biggest training is just mobile field force preparations because our, our role would be security and providing if it's here, then we're going to be calling, uh, Ramsey County Mobile Field Force and SWAT team and everybody's going to be on deck already, uh, working to actively ensure the safety of, uh, our community and our building until we can get this fence built up. So, that's where overtime is going to be, uh, increasing significantly if we need it, just based on our job.
Thank you, um, and then. And so, um, in your presentation, you had discussed kind of different, um, levels of consideration for, you know, when you would, you know, um, implement a certain tactic or a response. Can you explain a little bit about how that would look in North St. Paul?
Yeah, no, it, uh, it looks a lot better when there's a fence in between us and, uh, anybody that's trying to do damage to our building, that's for sure. If there's a safety layer of a fence separating anybody that's trying to throw rocks or soup cans at any of our officers, uh, a fence stops a lot of that. So, we are in a much better place as far as not having to use less lethal tactics when there's a divider because it, it really separates just that face-to-face. You don't, you don't get people walking up to our officers or other agencies' officers that are here helping us out when you have a fence creating that safety layer in between, so. Yeah, protecting life and protecting property, uh, that's when our, our less lethal devices are going to be deployed. And if, if there's a fence in between us, then the likelihood of having to resort to less lethal tactics goes down significantly just because they, they can't, you know, you, you can't have that, uh, you don't create that situation where we're in that, um, need to use it based on the, the safety of, of buildings or, or people.
If you, if you go back to the, the Brooklyn Center riots, um, at their police department, like I, like I touched on before, is the first couple nights, they just had that one singular fence and it was not a sturdy structure. It is, uh, five people could push it over.
So, it wasn't an anti-scaling?
Nope. It was just like. Literally, it all was, was a concrete barrier with a chain link fence that's bolted in. And that stuff is, you get five, six people, you can push it, push it over or climb it. This anti-scale fence, you, you know, in some of the pictures that I, that I showed, I can go back to them if you, if you'd like to see. But, it, it's all, just imagine like the, the cable barriers on the highway or on the freeways that you see. When a car hits it, it bends, but it doesn't break. And that's what this fence is designed to do is, is that it's designed to, to bend. And the main point that I want to express though is, is that they had that one single fence and then they were using all these, um, different tactics of tear gas and different crowd control measures. And they were getting complaints, um, from all the neighbors and everything like that about the tear gas and them having, trying to have a nice spring, I, or fall with their windows open and they couldn't because of the tear gas. But once they installed that secondary fence and offered an even bigger buffer, there was ultimately no crowd control devices actually used. They, the police department was able to step back and stay back away from the protests, for, uh, the protesters and, and agitators so that there, that those people could, uh, express their First Amendment rights in, in a safe manner and they didn't have to worry about the, um, any type of crowd control measures being used. And also for those agitators, that it was impossible for them to actually reach, reach officers or hurt them with any type of objects and, uh, um, soup cans and rocks and, and their own pepper spray and, and frozen water bottles.
Thank you, yeah, and, and, and to be clear, I'm not trying to say like, um, a critical incident is, and when you're getting things thrown at you is not warranted for offense. What I'm trying to understand is what is the process in which, you know, we, which, um, and, uh, de-escalation tactics are used beforehand as a preventative measure? And that's where I'm trying to understand whether it is, uh, an investment that, you know, is worthwhile.
Couple of quick other questions, Councilmember Thorson?
I, just, my concerns of this is kind of, some of them have been touched on. It seems like this may be more effective if there's some massive event here and it's prolonged and that, you know, the concerns about preventing damage to City Hall, if there's this, this spontaneous riot, there's nothing we're going to be able to prevent that. And then focusing on this, you know, I'm looking at this map, it's like, well, great, we have City Hall protected, but what about the rest of the city? What, what are these businesses, you know, right across the street or right next door think? You know, it's just that, I, I think the resources could be used better within the police department than committing to something like this where, I, I mean, I'm, it could, it could obviously be effective if we know like there's some planned protest or, you know, some planned controversial group that's coming into town. But it, you know, and then the public works involvement too on this, I, I'm concerned about, um, you know, you talked about these private contractors that charged hazard pay. I mean, obviously, they're going into an area where it's going to be dangerous and, you know, police are, are, you know, trained to deal with these things. I don't know if public works are necessarily trained to, or want to deal with that sort of thing. And then, you know, being a part of this consortium, if we're constantly having to send resources to other cities, then that's taking away from, you know, their job here, not that we're not willing to, to help and participate. I mean, the cost of fifty, you know, five grand a year doesn't seem like it's much. Especially if more cities get involved. Uh, I understand the desire to, to want to try to rethink what, you know, go over the last two years of this stuff that's happened, but, you know, North St. Paul's a hundred and thirty-five years, we're celebrating that anniversary and I don't, to my knowledge, we've never had a riot, uh, or any major civil unrest. That's not to say it would never happen and that's not to say we shouldn't plan, uh, for that. But again, I just, you know, I, I, I wish we had more time to, to, to kind of think this over and, and look at stuff. Because what I'm thinking is, I'm, I'm sure these groups got together and said, look, you know, especially what happened in Brooklyn Park and Minneapolis, you know, is there a better way to prevent things like this? And I'm just, you know, I'm not a law enforcement, but, you know, establishing a perimeter, couldn't, couldn't protecting City Hall if that was a goal, you know, maybe blocking off Margaret Street and Seventh Street downtown, kind of, you know, we block off during the car show with barricades and stuff and it prevents the flow of traffic, you know, that's one, you know, thing. I just, other ideas, other, I, I'd like to hear other ideas about kind of riot control or, you know, sorts of things like that rather than, you know, we, we've had this here tonight, we've, we had your presentation and now it's going to be on the agenda to get approved. I think maybe it might make sense to table that and maybe think about this a little more, get some more information, but.
I can, I'm, I'm happy to answer any, anything else you might be wondering. So, as, as far as just a couple, to respond to a couple of things that you said, so if you have, if we don't have the fence, then we have to have people. So, as far as resources, all of the resources are going to be surrounding the building. We have nineteen officers, we're not able to surround the building and keep the building safe, much less respond to emergency calls if we need to keep our building safe. So, if there's, and as far as just our, our blocking traffic plan, uh, for car shows or parades, you know, that's, that's one or two officers in a setting that is a non-violent setting with, uh, happy people and not, uh, protesters or, uh, angry folks that are unhappy about whatever issue and, um, they will blow by two officers on a street trying to block it in a matter of seconds and, and walk through it. So, putting the fence there allows us to have resources so we can respond to other calls. And if, if we don't have the fence, it's us asking for, uh, the help of Ramsey County Mobile Field. And if, if we don't have the fence, it's us asking for the help of Ramsey County Mobile Field Force, Ramsey County SWAT team, Maplewood, every surrounding agency and all of their officers. Eventually they're, they're going to say, okay, it's been two days. I've given you this many officers for two days. Here's a bill for all of their time and by the way, I need my officers back. So there's no guarantee. If we get, if, if we don't have a fence, then we're going to need people in order to keep our building not from being damaged. And, and just to quell any, any thoughts on, you know, we're, we're not just going to, if we have a complaint on a traffic stop, we're not calling to get the fence requested. It is going to be, there is a major critical incident. There is a large share of social media activity and intelligence that says North St. Paul City Hall is going to be a target. And then likely a crowd growing in numbers already outside before we pull the trigger and, and ask for the fence. So it's not just going to be something that we're asking, you know, every other week. It's going to be hopefully never that we're asking for it. But in case that we need it, it is our way of saying we don't have to dedicate or ask other agencies to dedicate resources to us in the form of people.
And that, you know, and I, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to get into a debate with you on trying to justify. I get the need or what you're asking for. I'm just trying to look at, you know, how effective this, this would be. I mean, we're showing City Hall. I mean, are there other areas within our city that would be worth protecting and defending if there was civil unrest? I mean, I, you talked about the coordination of some of these rioters and, and the damage that they look to do. I would think, you know, our water supply, water towers, pump houses, our electrical grid, things like that would need merit protection. I mean, is that, are these, the map you're showing is around City Hall. I mean, there's public works. I mean, if there's a specific business that's targeted, can this fencing be deployed at those areas or is it just?
It, it can. It is just for government or state facilities. So any, any government or state agency that's in it can only ask to protect those buildings. But when we have the fence, so history has shown, I mean, the Minneapolis precinct burned down. All the, all the targets are the actual police departments or the city halls that they're in. It hasn't been, you know, Joe's hat shop and, and they have seen damage. Private businesses have absolutely seen damage, but the main target is the police departments or the city halls. So if we can protect that with a fence, then that allows us to create the strike teams, which Sergeant Batawich talked about in his presentation, that then is able to better protect the other smaller private businesses or schools or whatever, or water supply or, or other targets in the city that are still, they're absolutely a target. But if we can control safety measures at our city hall, which has typically been the primary target, then we have more resources to ensure the safety elsewhere. Yeah.
To me, it sounds like, you know, fifty, one hundred dollars is an insurance policy to me. It's, it sounds like a cheap insurance policy to have. My only concern is the, uh, our, our staff here. You know, we're a small city. We don't have a, a lot of resources for possibly in a, on a mega scale of having our employees leave here. What happens if they don't leave and they have, they don't help out at the setting up at the fence? Or do we get fined or do, what, what happens?
Nothing at all. So that's in the agreement. It's still up to Ron and Public Works to make the determination on whether or not we want to go or we can go to help. If Ron says Public Works is strapped for people and, and the two that are in the fence build out team happen to be out of town, we're not sending anybody. And it's still up to any, any agency that's involved in the mutual aid pact to deploy the resources or not. So we still have the ultimate say on yes, we can help you or no, we can't.
And to me, this seems like a, a soft way to, to do things. If we had to do, like Councilmember Thorson said, had to do more than just City Hall, I think there's a bigger event that's happening within our communities than just, you know, a riot out, out, out in front. To me, this is kind of a soft thing if we're to have a specific, something happening in front of our city hall. If something major is going to happen with Minneapolis, St. Paul, I don't think we're going to be seeing this fence at all if it's going to come out to all the, all the suburban cities.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Bottom line is, you can't protect everything around us.
No, and I, I would, I mean, this would be a North St. Paul born incident where I'm calling to ask for this fence. It wouldn't be reactionary, something happens in another city, unless it is like every, every city hall and police department is, is targets now. But it would, it would very likely be a North St. Paul born incident that inspires our request for the fence if we hopefully never need it.
I hate to ask, but if, if we could stop debate now on this and then if you could stay maybe for the regular meeting? I know Ben has to go, but if you're able to stay and if we have some more questions to kind of follow up with the regular council meeting.
Yeah, is there, oh, is there any more questions in the immediate or?
I don't think so. Oh. Okay, we'll, we'll take it on at the regular meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ben, Chief.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Why don't we go ahead? City manager, if we could get the, I kind of want to get to the bar sidewalk encroachment ordinance. I think we'll skip the downtown furniture guidelines for right now, but the sidewalk encroachment ordinance. If we can get that real quick and I hate to put you on the back burner, Dr. Waldron, but I want to get this going here. Brandy, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Let's see here. Brief presentation for you. Okay.
I got about fifteen minutes?
I can make it quick, I promise.
Perfect.
Okay, and your packet is a draft ordinance for a new sidewalk encroachment permit and process. It's called chapter ninety-four within, sorry, it's section ninety-four twenty-two within chapter ninety-four Streets and Sidewalks under the title nine general regulations. So the purpose of this is to create a permanent mechanism and regulations for the use of the public sidewalk, the right of way for private uses, private uses. So this would be primarily for sidewalk cafes and possibly sidewalk sales and the like. Of note, it's my understanding that outdoor seating was allowed during COVID as a temporary measure to keep businesses afloat. So the businesses in North St. Paul have voiced their desire to continue that, outdoor seating, offering outdoor seating to customers. So that is part of the reason why we're here tonight for this. So within the draft ordinance, there is a permit application. The permit could be granted annually. There will be a fee and a site plan requirement. The review period would be thirty days and the city manager or designee would be the authorized individual to issue those permits. And the city manager or that designee retains the right to limit the total number of permits issued per year. The applicant if denied has the option to appeal to city council. So general requirements within this ordinance. If you wanted to have a sidewalk permit, you'd have to submit a site plan. You have to demonstrate that you can maintain a fifty-four inch clear zone for pedestrians. You cannot block fire exits or lanes and you must adhere to ADA requirements. Sidewalk sale, another thing that you could use for this permit, you would adhere to the same general requirements. So related to sidewalk cafes specifically, you have to show on your site plan where you're planning to put street furnishings. They can be located either adjacent to the curb or up next to the building, but they must maintain the fifty-four inch pedestrian right of way and they must also consider existing infrastructure. So no, no alcohol would be allowed without a separate alcohol license. So that is covered in a different chapter of the ordinance. Furnishings cannot be fixed to the ground and they must be made of a design quality that is sturdy and weather resistant. The owner shall keep the area clean. Tables must be stacked at the end of the day. If adjacent to the traffic lane, then a planter or a railing would be required. This is one of the agenda items that you had had on there. Lisa Ritchie has prepared these furniture guidelines and presented them to planning commission and they have acted as a, as a commission to set forth this as a policy or recommend this as a policy to city council that any outdoor furnishings be durable, commercial grade, weather resistant and it can be of wrought iron, cast iron aluminum or lumber grade HDP. So other, other requirements of the ordinance, liability insurance would be required in an amount that we have yet to determine. The permit can be revoked if they fail to adhere to the requirements of the ordinance and there is an appeal process in which they can appeal to the city council within forty-five days, forty-five days of a denial or revocation. So here's an example of what not to do. So here is a sidewalk cafe and people are trying to walk and there's too much stuff in the right of way. That is all. Any questions regarding the draft ordinance?
Was this taken from another city at all or?
I was instructed to take a look at Stillwater and White Bear Lake and neither of those communities have sidewalk cafe ordinances on the books right now. It's something that they're looking into. So I, if I, memory serves, I believe I took a lot of this from City of St. Paul and maybe Minneapolis. I did look at other communities throughout the country, but those seemed to be the most relevant given our climate here and they're similarly situated.
Questions for Councilmember Thorson?
So you said there's other cities like Stillwater and White Bear that don't have this, but they have outdoor seating per plate? Is, is that what?
Their outdoor seating that they would have would be on private property. So this is specifically dealing with the right of way.
Okay. And how is this any different than what we've already approved previously?
That, that's the private property. So that was related to fences specifically. So if you, bar owner wanted to have on your land outdoor seating, then at that point, before we amended the ordinance, it said you had to have a six foot tall fence. And so we made it a little bit more flexible so that you had to have some kind of separation, but it didn't have to be a fence specifically. So that was completely related to private land. This is public realm.
Okay.
Would this apply to say a snowman statue?
Yes, that, that came up as well. So we did add some language. Soren's attorney's office helped with that to ensure that if there is a, maybe you, I can answer this a little bit better. So the snowy statue is something that some commercial entities might want to put in the, or in the public realm and sell them at some point in time. Maybe you can explain this better.
It's more of a sculpture and it serves as artistic and also as a way to promote the business. So almost like their own advertisement in a way. Because it'll be a little placard or whatever.
Okay, so yep, the ordinance has been drafted to include statutes, stash, statues as being one of those items that you can have in the right of way for this permit.
Last question. Thank you. And you had mentioned that the seating will be stacked at the end of the day and stored. Would it be stored inside or out or just in its places?
Uh, that, you know, all of these provisions are up for debate, but as it's written now, it's basically you'd have to stack it and leave it outs. You could leave it outside as long as it's neat and tidy at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cole.
To build on that question, wintertime, leave it stacked outside neat and tidy?
Well.
Or summer?
I don't know that we make, that's a good comment. And if it's something that we should consider adjusting, that's.
I'm only thinking of snow removal for wintertimes, that was.
Yeah, I don't think we have that language in there.
If they can leave it set, stored there over the winter, that'd pose a problem. I did have a couple of questions. I know this isn't something we're voting on tonight. I don't believe there's anything to bring forward. I am interested in the opinion of the car show, the opinion of police chief and the opinion of legal. I've heard that two of the three that I just referenced were somewhat opposed to doing this, but I never was told why. So I was just curious.
Leah, is it Coke from your office, has actually been working hand in hand with me on putting this together? So it's, as far as them having opposition to this, I'm not entirely sure if, if they do and what it is.
I just had heard when you, when we originally started this conversation, I believe that Soren was opposed to it, but didn't know, I didn't know why. So.
Probably related to alcohol on the outside, but do you want to address that?
Sidewalks aren't made to balance beer and.
Yeah.
There were comments made, snarky comments, which is fine, but I just needed, I was looking for a little bit more of the.
Regarding the police chief, we did send him a draft of this. I believe it was a week or two ago. So I'll double check and see if he has any comments on it.
And then just the car, the car show. I mean, I know they've been opposed to some things. This worked for the last two years, well, two years ago. So I was just curious if, if we sought their opinion.
This is new, new to me. Is there an organization specifically? I, I'm not sure who, who the car show is.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll check with.
And I'm going to.
City manager on that.
And then questions around open container. There is not a Friday night that's gone by that I haven't walked downtown after nine o'clock that I haven't seen an establishment with an open container issue. So I know that, that there are some who police it very well and there's some that aren't. So are we looking at or have we thought about amending the language to it has to be, the alcohol in this designated space has to be delivered by a server? So that takes the opposition, that takes the opportunity for someone to walk out the door and turn the corner?
I don't think that this particular ordinance is the place for that. If the, if that is an issue and it's not in existence in your liquor licensing ordinance, that would be the place to address that.
I assume it's, I'm assuming it's in our liquor license issues, but they have to redesignate the area in which alcohol can be served in.
Correct.
There's going to be the, how many inches, fifty-four inches, fifty-six inches?
Fifty-four.
Designated sidewalk space. Is that deemed properties? Is that city space where they can have an open container?
Anything related to alcohol would be addressed through the amended alcohol license that any establishment would have to have if they want to serve alcohol. So if through this permitting process, you have the right to use the sidewalk. You don't have the right to use the sidewalk and serve alcohol. That's, that would be above and beyond. So you'd have to have two separate permitting processes. But we can check and I can work with the attorney's office to see what needs to be amended, if anything, to require.
Just a lot of what, just a lot of what ifs that, that I had around.
So if I could just make sure that I understand what you're saying. So alcohol service outside must be provided by server.
I just need area, I need help around the language of can I walk out of a bar, cross my fifty-six inches and go into the designated space? And, and the city is responsible for the sidewalks. And I recognize that under the insurance piece, they, the city has to be listed in there to take care of some of that. But, you know, I, I guess I'm concerned with, with the liquor licensing aspect of it and how it relates to, to this.
A little bit more research will have to go into that. But I will be working with, you bring, you bring up some good, good questions regarding the alcohol or service. So I will check with the attorney's office and see what they think about, I forget what chapter of the ordinance it's in regarding the licensure and then also see if the police chief has any specific thoughts on how to, how to manage that too.
That's it for me. Thank you.
My only concern is how many people are allowed to be into that designated area?
That would be.
So based on.
Yeah, that would be evaluated at the time of site plan submittal. That's a good point that we can include some language about capacity and how it relates to square footage or seating. Some good comments.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And Brandy, the other conversation that we had was basically somebody was going to take a look at the footprint of space in front of each of the businesses, subtract out the fifty whatever inches it was and then that would, that would let us know how much space was available.
I think it really depends on every business that wants to come forward because your sidewalk is so variable.
Because there's some that's going to have a lot of space and there's some that may not have any.
Correct, that's true.
So have, have we done that so that? So have we done that so that?
No, we have not.
Okay.
I mean, it's possible that we could put in there an exception. If the sidewalk is so narrow, maybe you could reduce the width to, I think, forty-eight inches is the minimum required. We went with fifty-four so that we weren't doing just the bare minimum to make sure that there's adequate space for all users of the sidewalk, but we can certainly look at exceptions.
Cool. Thank you.
Does that comply to ADA then?
Yeah.
Because this is a workshop, I do have a bar owner here, Kelly. I don't know if you want to just quick, I got a few minutes here, if you want to quick respond to maybe some of this. And, you know, to me, part of this should be some input from the bars, too, you know, what worked for you during the pandemic, you know, what didn't work, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here is something that is probably different than what the pandemic was, because we're gonna try to limit the amount of people that are in a certain area. Maybe just give your quick input.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that it's coming to a workshop so that we can talk about it and see what can work. So during the pandemic, obviously, it was that way because that was the only way we were gonna literally survive, is by having some sort of outdoor seating. And I think everybody kind of scrambled on our end to figure out what would work, plastic chairs, tables that you could find, because everybody was doing it across the state. So we were in a struggle of, I just need stuff. So then, after having that, it was like, this is a great thing. Our customers love sitting outside. It's gorgeous outside, like today is a beautiful day. They love sitting outside and enjoying the beauty of our city while they have a cocktail and just sit and relax and enjoy. So we're trying to figure out the best way to accommodate what our customers are looking for, yet be obviously within guidelines for the city. So, I mean, some of the things make sense. Obviously, you have to have a walkway or right-of-way control over it. I think we all try to do a really good job about policing ourselves of alcohol and not leaving the premises, and especially, I mean, we have just one door out the front, so, I mean, every place is a little different in how they're set up, but I think if everybody had just a nice little patio, it's just more inviting as you kind of just drive through the city. And that's, I think, one of the big things is what we were looking at, is, because this had come up even before COVID, of doing something like this, and then COVID actually made it have to happen so that we could keep businesses going. So I think now that we had it, it was like, yay, this is working, this is great, how do we keep it now? So, yeah.
Okay. So we'll, yep, so it helps. So a lot of questions were asked tonight, and I think Brandy's gonna go back and try to tweak it and come up with an ordinance that makes sense, not only for the city but for you guys, too, so.
Yeah. That makes sense. Yeah. I mean.
And we'd love to have your input, you know, once things.
I mean, you know, we're at the end of summer now, so, I mean, I feel like I gotta ramp up for next year. Maybe I can buy furniture on sale. I don't know.
But I do, you know, you did see the furniture part and of it.
Yes.
I think that kind of makes sense.
Yes. I mean, it'd be nice.
We're leaving it kind of up to you, as long as it's under this parameter of.
Yeah. And I know we've kind of modeled what we like after what the Legion has. Their patio furniture is nice, it seems to have stood up to the test of our weather, which is a big factor here, so.
And I think stacking it during the winter is not gonna happen.
I would suggest it has to go.
Yeah.
I mean, we have some on, room on the side of our building that we couldn't do that, but I think I would rather it just be gone.
Right.
One less thing I have to worry about.
Right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Any other questions?
You guys do a phenomenal job, you're policing the alcohol outside. You've got, the signs are posted inside, right at the door, you can't miss that sign walking out. So you, you guys have taken the leadership role in making sure that this works.
Okay.
I would just be curious to know now, if you take the tape measure out and figure out what fifty-four inches, what's that look like for you guys out in front?
Well, I'll have to do a little figuring out. So we have those three boxes.
Yeah.
Out in front of our building. So I would have to.
And I hear one of the boxes is coming out.
Yeah, one's coming out.
I did hear that.
Oh, okay.
So that's good news.
Yes, good news. So I would have to figure out how that spacing would look, but.
I'm just curious, does it give, does it give you adequate space? Does it?
It would definitely give us some. I mean, for us, we're looking at like four tables. One, I have to be able to manage it, which is a huge thing for us. I want to be able to make sure we have adequate coverage for it, so. But I think there would be enough for at least three.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, you guys.
Any other questions for Brandy? Not Dr. Craig Waldron? No, we got fifteen minutes or a few minutes past.
Good evening.
It was a, it was a packed full night tonight, so.
Yes, yes. A lot of good stuff happening.
Very sorry.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm here to talk about the next step as it relates to the community center. You had the report from me spelling out a number of issues and also talking about what my suggestion is in terms of the next move. Over here, I have my really high-tech chart where I was thinking through some of this, kind of like the typical academic, I see something and I've got it right on it, so. But it kind of points out to where we are now. We first had to deal with the short-term issues, which was essentially to stop the bleeding. So we're on top of that now. The roof is gonna get fixed, the heating component's gonna be addressed, and we extended the lease with the volleyball group for the next six months or so. And then, as we move into the longer term, you had my suggestion in the report, and essentially based on three things. What your previous council vote was to keep the facility, then the meeting that I got to have with you where you basically just talked about your longer-term vision with me, and then our community forum, in which the public members that came gave us their input as it relates to the facility, which was also essentially to keep it and maintain it as a positive community component. Thank you, Three M.
I'm sorry, what?
Thank you, Three M. Oh, yes, that's right. I know. I wouldn't know what I had to do without this stuff, so. So then the, I think it was the option D that I had in there is what I'm suggesting is to, to keep it and move forward with the repairs. Now, there's a number of steps that go along with that, and the first one, and that's what would be before you tonight, is to ask the WALD group, and this is the engineering group that you've used in the past, I know Ron's worked with them a lot, to develop a proposal for us in terms of the management and the next step, to, you know, talk to us how they would do the bidding to come forward, and in terms of how they're gonna put the estimates together and so forth, some of the overall costs. So that's the next step, approving, bringing them in to present a management proposal to you, and we would meet with them first and work through some of that, and then bring that back for your approval. And then if everything went ideally, what we would, what we would do is, of course, we take a look at the estimates, are we comfortable with that? And if we are, we go forward with the bids. So it's all systems go, we're getting the bids in to get it done, and hopefully, they do come in in a level that we like, we're comfortable with it, we can finance it, and we, we move forward. But there's another critical piece here that I'm suggesting, that I think I've heard all of you talk about off and on, and it essentially came up in the forum, and that is if we're moving forward aggressively with that rehab, that we put together a really important committee that's comprised of some of you, some of the community members, the volleyball folks and so forth, and really figure out what that future use is gonna be. How do we, how do we want to use that? Who's gonna manage it? So once people see that we're serious and things are moving forward, that we put together that critical community group to essentially develop a use plan. And I think at that point, that's almost as important as the actual physical improvements that are going on. So the last piece, however, is that as we talk about this, I don't want anybody to think that we're locked in. There's about three fail-safe periods here where we can essentially stop the show. The first one is if the WALD comes back, we don't even like the proposal that they're talking about. You know, they're talking about, you know, an exorbitant cost or something like that, or we're just not comfortable with it. That's it. We don't move forward that proposal, and we look at other options. Second fail-safe, so let's say we do work with WALD, they come back, they bring us back all these estimates, and we look at it, and between Dan and Brian and myself, that we're just not comfortable with it. You know, we cannot make this work, this, these estimates are much higher than we anticipated, and therefore, we essentially put a stop to it and look at those other options that I had listed in there. And then the third fail-safe is that if the bids come in too high, and at that point, we're not comfortable with it, we simply shut it down or rebid, or look at other options, or go back to some of those other options of, you know, basically tearing it down and maybe keeping the site and redeveloping it and so forth. So that's what I'm suggesting in terms of a way forward, but also, I hope you feel comfortable that we do have some fail-safe options here. If we are not feeling comfortable about this, we can put a stop to it and look at some of our other options. So what's before you tonight would be the recommendation that we could move forward and bring back a proposal from WALD, the council.
Good. Thank you for your hard work on that. Any questions for Craig? Councilmember Thorson?
When you were, I mean, during your research and everything, this idea to resurrect it or to, you know, spend whatever it's gonna be, I mean, obviously, it's gonna move forward, but we'll find more refined details, but we have early estimates around $2 million. Has there been discussion with finance and how we're gonna finance this?
We've had some preliminary discussions. I've talked to Dan about it, and if it were in the range of $2 million between some of the existing funds that you've had put aside and other funding arrangements within the city budget, $2 million looks like it could be handled pretty well. If we start getting way beyond that, I think that's where we really have to have some of those critical conversations.
And then, and so, just so I'm clear, your recommendation is we move forward with finding out what that is, and then later on, we're gonna decide what the future of this facility is gonna be, what the public use is gonna be?
Yeah, I think, you know, and this even goes back to the time when, when I was here, we, you'd try to talk to people and try to get something worked out, and they'd kind of like, well, Craig, why don't you guys get your act together and show us what you're gonna do there, and, you know, kind of let us see the whites of your eyes that you are indeed going to improve this and make it a viable facility. So, you know, and I think that's a reasonable question, but that's why I say that, that piece becomes so critical, to have that community, committee put forward if we are doing that major improvement, that we really work hard and aggressively to come up with that future use plan.
I would just make one more suggestion, that on your fail-safe, you add item D.
Okay.
And that would be the elections that are coming up in November, and the potential to have.
Yep.
Three new members on this body that may see, you know, a different viewpoint or whatever. And they're gonna have ultimate say over.
Yeah.
You know, the financing as well in the long term, so.
And with those fail-safes, I think you hit it right on the head, because they'll be sitting there, and they'll be voting on that stuff, so, yeah, they'll be a critical part of how we go forward or if we move forward.
What else? Gotta be kidding me, we got five minutes left?
Hey, there we go. All right, good.
Want to look at furniture?
Yeah. You want to look at furniture? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Very good. Anything else? Interim city manager, Frandl.
That is it.
Okay. At this time, motion to adjourn.
I'm over, Your Honor.
By councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Sign by councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose we adjourn for about five minutes.